Well, I wanted to point out that because it did say that.
No, I saw it like it popped up.
Yeah.
It just happened.
In the beginning, I never heard.
No, I was saying like, see it just popped up as you would, I waited till you finished your two sentences. But, but it just happened.
I, I never heard it say recording in progress when it first started.
I'll find out.
Someone's taking them.
Anyway, anyway, but I mean, I think it's, it's been a learning. It's gonna be, continue to be a learning experience for everybody, but I think, you know, the planning board is probably gonna be looking at South Beach every time you come in for a good long time and say, how close are you? And maybe, you know, maybe it's gonna be a requirement, maybe, I, I, I'm just suggesting this that it should be a requirement for a pre and a after, I mean, it's gotta be some sort of oversight on behalf of South Beach that looks at these and says, monitors where those groups are, monitors those areas that do not serve areas that says, hey, wait a minute, you know, it doesn't matter if Rex or whoever else working up there, there's gonna be someone there that's watching that saying, hey, wait a minute, you just took the ribbon, that can't do that. You know, and, and, and if Rex says, um, once I came back to listen, they're gonna come find you and say, what, what are we gonna do? So, like.
You can hire a helicopter.
One of the concerns I've had is that all.
Yeah, drones, helicopters.
And I, one of the concerns, like I said, it's been a year. Yeah, it, it shouldn't have been, it shouldn't have been a year before we get to this point, I think, a lot of that would've, instead of maybe have four lots. If it, if you had something in place, and I don't know if you have anything in place that is oversight, with that oversight you have, but when someone's backfilling and stuff like that, to me, that would go a long ways towards, you know, alleviating all of these concerns. You know, um, I think the stormwater one, uh, who's probably the best to go because it is the one you'll be able to use the most going forward. Also for me, I, I probably got it that way, I don't know how everyone else feels, but, um, and, and that, that way there it keeps within the regulations of the town. And it may be good for, it may be not just your development, I don't know if anyone else realizes the use of those catchment things, so the drip edge thing, so if that's all, is that new? No, commonly uses them too. So it's, and so I've seen it employed by other engineers as well, so it's a common solution or way to beat the town's stormwater organs.
It's just kind of a theoretical question, not necessarily related to this, but for future development, like the new road you're building now, cutting across the ski trail. Um, those are tight lots, those are steep lots, and there's a lot of ledge up there. I know you already have your AOT for this, so this, this is a theoretical question, but let's say you were just planning that now, would there be any value in planning within the AOT permit? A, a, an amount, set amount of runoff that comes off of the lots that you take care of as part of the water mitigation, stormwater mitigation for the road, who else is doing, I mean, I don't know, a thousand square feet or two thousand square feet of, of pervious surface on, on each lot?
We did that.
You did that, for those lots up there?
So, so for every uphill lot, right?
Right, your downhill lots are just not gonna.
Downhill lots, we couldn't get downhill water to jump uphill, but every uphill lot, there's, I believe, a four thousand square foot impervious calculation built into it to allow that water to, so in other words, the road drainage. Right, there are two major, uh, rain tank systems, one of them called SAG and then went down by the intersection with Crook Mile, that are sized to handle four thousand square feet of impervious from all of the other ones.
Okay. What a great idea.
So, i- i- if you do the stormwater management of those lots, um, I don't know, want to check the regulations, I don't know if you're gonna have a backend for an amended land use permit, because it put stormwater management on there, not, but we, there should be some sort of documentation that says it was amended to state to include, um, stormwater management. Because of whole service, just identifying, so it, we're all clear, we're all, the reasons why, how much it was, and what, what you do with mitigated or whatever, and that way there, it's documented, and that you knew what is what it was, and this is all we took care of.
Yeah, that, that happens periodically with different lots, while Ray will create, will ask for us to amend the permit and create different special conditions on the permit to address things.
Ray will give us, Ray will review this, and Ray will give, give the town his blessing on what his calculations and stuff.
I'm good with that, yeah, I think, you know, my next step would be is, you know, it's almost as if we had never applied for these lots, we will end up coming up with a new engineering plan that has stormwater on it, we'll submit it to Ray for review, he'll do his typical review, give his blessing, once we get through any of his comments that go to amended permit, or however you want, guys wanna handle the paperwork side of it.
I mean, we're gonna need to come up with some sort of way that the town is not, the planning board is not, by when there is a violation, something more, or when you're up against it, because what I saw, what I read, it was just you, Ray, and Sean in October, the two of us, I asked Green and I asked those people, what they thought about Green was July, he said, I know Jay said the board slapped them, they really didn't have a lot of knowledge about it either, so it didn't get from October to now, it didn't get to till July, this one got to Green, so to me, that's something that needs to be corrected, and it's both, to me, it, it's fit, it, you have a responsibility to make sure that you tell the town, and whoever you tell for town staff, it's Sean or whoever it is, Ray, Ray should be telling how to. So, I mean, and that wasn't done either. So we need to, we need to work, you know, we need to work on that.
Yeah, but in, I guess, I don't wanna say Scott's defense, but also like Ray's defense, things on land and use permits all the time, where what they put on paper might not necessarily be feasible when they get on the property, and we issue amended land use permits, I don't wanna say all the time, but it's not a rare occurrence where we'll issue an amended land use permit, and it doesn't go before the planning board, because as long as they put in the new plans, what needs to be put in place, I mean, we allow people to build over fifty-five square feet as long as there's stormwater, so as long as they revise their plans to include the stormwater, we revise the land use permit, and then it's issued, so I understand that this is a violation, but there are instances that are not rare that they get out there, they say, this isn't going to work, they go to Ray, they say, this isn't going to work, Ray makes them revise their plans, install stormwater, or it's not necessarily always to do with stormwater, sometimes it's like they need to move their driveway, or the house is gonna be angled slightly different on the lot, it's not necessarily always stormwater management issues, but there are times where we issue amended permits, and it doesn't necessarily move itself all the way up to the planning board.
But it depends on, on what it is, if it's a, if it's a one lot, house lot, that's fine, but if it isn't a planned phase development, or something of that nature, that the, that the planning board needs to know, so there needs to be some of that coordination as well.
Sure. Right, I mean, what I think we're gonna hear is all these lots are gonna come in stormwater, and it shouldn't be an issue.
Karina, question?
Yes.
Uh, we talked about, um, when you issue a, an LUP. There's a list, we were supposed to be getting a list of all of them. Now, on the ones that you make a change to or modify, is that also put in that there could be a list for that, so we could get a copy of those?
It's, it's on the same list, we don't keep two separate lists, so it would be all included on that master spreadsheet.
Okay, so if you have a brand new LUP issued, then as, let's say, for example, like with Scott's LP, you would say, we amended this, and that would also be there with an amendment?
Correct.
Okay, right.
So, are we gonna get those? I haven't seen that.
I haven't, I haven't either.
I know we talked about it, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I don't, I told you, I know, I have no qualms giving the planning board that on a monthly basis or weekly basis, whatever you choose to do, it, it, it was included, it, it was kinda hard, because I had to scan the PDF, but it was included in the Cedar Circle documentations, I don't know.
I saw that, that was hard.
Yeah.
To try and make a turn, try and get it.
Yeah, like I said, so moving forward, we'll just either print it out or give you, we'll make the Excel spreadsheet into a PDF.
We used to get hard copies of what they just call them. They were.
Yeah, with, with every.
Homeowners and where, where they were, and when they were completed and stuff like that.
Yeah, that's on that list, yeah.
Just like that list.
Yeah.
We were young, they were telling us, they used to, you know, they'd hand them out to us.
I mean, I, like I said, I have no problem making sure that we print it out in your regular package.
And I think once, the start of it, once a month will be good.
Yeah, no problem.
Then one, okay, with that, once a month.
Something else you can add to that, by every, every member of the planning board, we live all over the town. You have that list, it's something going on, I'm supposed to, if it's not on that list, we can turn it to town, have a check it.
Right, yeah.
Most of the business that works, actually, we don't do that anymore.
Oh, um, would it be better to have it twice, like when we do a meeting? From meeting to meeting, would that be too much to ask?
No, I mean, we don't issue, I don't, I don't.
Right.
It's a spreadsheet, yeah, I mean, it's printed out, I mean, we could do that if you want, we don't need to.
I don't know if a month would be, like, I don't know, I'm just actually not looking at it from meeting to meeting. Uh, if that doesn't work.
I mean, sorry, but every two weeks is that report?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're not gonna see very much difference in a two week time period, just because if any of the plans need to go through a, a third party review process, that automatically adds two weeks on to the time we get the application, I mean, I'll do whatever you want, I just don't think you're gonna see much difference in a two week time period.
If that's the case, then I'm good with a month, I didn't know, like, a month times.
We'll just take a poll, poll the board, month, 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 so, I don't know.
I'll bring one out for the next planning board meeting.
Go ahead, Joe. The past, just give us one in, in an Excel spreadsheet. Pending, approved, pending, still more, it's like you're right down the list, you're going down for the entire year, but you have a list coming out every, every other meeting.
Yeah.
Being done, it would just, and if they, come to the office, take five minutes a week for today, done.
Yeah, Joe, I mean, the spreadsheet recap is very, is, is extremely detailed, it goes back to twenty twenty-two, it has a hundred columns, it has green for being good, it has yellow for being pending, it has red for being in violation or something, or not doing something, so we're using it, it's, it's, it's a very detailed and complex spreadsheet, it's not just like the name and the permit number and where it is, so.
Anthony Coffee, the owner's house, they can find it on the web or not.
Yeah, like I said, things have gotten much more complex, Sean does dates and times, and she has photos and flight visits, and it, it, it's pretty complex, so.
Good to hear about the photos, it sounds pretty new.
Josh, are you, uh, you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm good, Jim, and we're back on the twenty-fourth anyways for the heist.
Yeah.
Uh, I would suggest maybe you could just put a line item in the agenda, where we just give you another update, like where we are, twenty-fourth? Yeah, just, just like a quick update, because what we'll do is, I'll connect with Ray, um, we'll figure out what we're gonna do, whether we're gonna put any work going place, or anything that happens to review stuff. We'll start getting stuff like right away, I understand, like especially that one where I'm pretty confident we can comply with right away. Gotta get that one to them, that's like the beginning page, we'll go through that one, make sure that works, then, then if we know that works, we can keep moving through all of them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can make sure, and if you wanna make sure and resolve the Cedar Circle before we move on to the heist, so if you can get Ray to fly onto the process you wanna do, that would be.
Yeah, that's why I just think we could just, like, along with the agenda, we'll at least give you an update on what has transpired over the last two weeks in that time period.
All right, great, thank you. All right, guys, we're done with that, sure.
Just so you know, I'm sorry, it was recording, it's been uploaded the first half, so, yeah.
I mean, you don't have to come back. That's, uh, except for the acceptable, more possible rest of waiver placement due, Taylor, on that, of property on the Blue and Con and Central Con. But these are blame con and central con, so. For an additional commercial building. If this, so I'm gonna, I'm related to Daniel, so that does come with.
It's a conceptual.
Okay. You're okay with that, everyone's okay with that?
Yep.
Taylor, you okay with that? All right, someone come up, I will. Get this done. I wanna go ahead and say where you're at with this, or do you wanna be?
Chip? Um, I'm putting an addition on myself, we're on one seventy-seventh Connect Road. I came in and asked about a building permit, they gave me the paperwork for the building permit, I was issued a building permit on five twenty-seven of twenty twenty-five. I received an email at the end of August stating that there was an error, and I needed to go through site plan review, go through the site plan review process due to exceeding five hundred square feet, I like.
Turn on my pulvin' cord, and that way they're.
Thank you. So, in the email, it, uh, sorry, I'll take that joke. Um, in the email, it said to come in, talk to Karina, um, due to the clerical error, I guess you would call it, that they shouldn't have given me the building permit, because I was over, it's like twelve hundred and eighty square feet, I believe it is, it's at five hundred thirty-two, five forty is what my building is, and the criteria that triggers site plan review is five hundred square feet, so I came in, she was busy, I talked to Carol and Jade, um, they said I needed to go through site plan review, then I told them, because it said in the email to talk to Karina to have her give me a call, so she called me, and she said that this was an option of the waiver for site plan review. Um, I've got a survey that I did that proves everything, shows everything that's on that property over there. There's no, we're in general use, there's no nothing other than conforming to the general use rules and regulations. Um, I guess the question for you guys is if you would waiver a site plan review, myself, I feel that you guys decide if you wanna labor it or you don't, I have a building permit, I support concrete, I have lumber ordered, and I have trusses ordered, so that's where I'm at with the whole situation, um. Who's fault, who's not fault, that's not a my issue, I have a building permit, um, if you guys feel the need, or that it's okay for a waiver, issue me a waiver. Um, as far as I understand, whether I go for a waiver or site plan review, there needs to be, um, a butter notice is sent out. The way this whole thing went down, I don't feel I'm, I should be responsible for the, a butter's notices, that's another fee, I paid, I don't know, fifteen hundred dollars for this building permit, two thousand dollars for a survey for a heated space, we won't even get into the, I don't think that B is acceptable, so I, I don't feel that it's my place or responsibility to pay anymore. And I specifically said when I came in here for a building permit, I don't have to go through the site plan review stuff, do I? And they gave me the building permit, I filled it out, I got my survey, I submitted it, they sent it to Karina to sign the building permit, and here we are today, tonight, after event both two hours, or what we sat here for. So, so that's my, my part, I guess.
I've got a little bit of discussion with Karina about this. You wanna speak that about the, about the motivation?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, there's only five of others, I mean, there's six technically, but the town's one of them, I have no problem absorbing the a butter notice fees. Um, it was an error on our house, and, and in-house error, I, I have no issue taking accountability for that, and you know, absorbing the, the costs associated with the butter notices.
So then the only thing to, people require, Taylor, is you can come in and make out an application for a waiver, and then you just come back, we'll send out the, the town will send out the butter notice, you should come back in with your plans and stuff, in case there's some butter out there that may have concern, and I don't think, I didn't just move off from there.
Did you guys get a plan in your packet of my property?
Yes.
Um, is that sufficient enough? The only reason I ask is because Carol said something about if that didn't work, I needed to get it. And I don't wanna do this two and three and four times.
You're talking about this, this?
Yeah, this certain document.
Yeah, yeah, she said that she would print it out on that, but sometimes that's not enough, so I, if that wasn't enough, I needed to get full-size ones.
Technically, it wouldn't be enough for a site plan review, but if you vote to waive it, this is fine, that is not, yeah.
Okay, so I, when I fill out this form, that's, I fill out the form, they send out the mailers, I come for whatever the meeting date is, and I don't have to bring anything but myself.
That's right.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I did notice something on the plan though. There's, there's a, um, sewer line that runs across your property, and the town has an easement for it, and that's typically easements are on plans like this, to show where that sewer line runs. Um, was, was Gardner, Gardner did this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, was he not aware of that, or do you know what?
Uh, I will have to check, and for everybody that doesn't know, this is my uncle's property, we're in business together, and I'm the representing partner, I guess, so I will check on the, all of the easement nature on the plan, um, I'm, I don't, I know there's a sewer line that runs down there, but when you start talking paperwork and this and that, I don't.
Gardner can also find it in the, in the registry deeds, pretty easy.
And, and typically, it's, it's drawn or dotted, whatever, planning is a note saying booking page number of where the easement is, just, just a note like that.
I might even have a copy of it that I could send you to give to Gardner.
Okay.
If you have, that'd be helpful.
I feel like I've seen it before, um, when I was eating crow, when we made this mistake, and I was going back to the old file. Um, and I feel like I saw it, so if I, if I have it, I'll just shoot it off to you.
Okay. I have something for that, go ahead. Billy did come for the planning boards and the town, because it was, it was an agreement, or someone could go, they made an agreement together, recorded in town books, recorded in a type machine for the planning board, get it approved up, but relocated from where it was coming out to Route, uh, one twelve, huh? Connect Road, three A, Connect Road. But the town has records of where that sewer line is, and agreed to it, and doesn't affect it, right up here to the driveway, not into the parking lot, and create a lot, bring a session.
I feel like I, I feel like I saw it, when I was looking through the old.
I don't, it must have been before my time, because I don't ever recall any sewer relocation over there.
Well, the agreement.
I think there was an easement relocation.
I don't know, maybe for the sewer line, I'm, I'm, I'll check with Billy.
Check with Billy.
Anyway, it would have, it would have to be over a graph, and so Karina doesn't have it, Gardner can get it right on graphs, he's got that access, so he's gonna help, this guy will pick that up, put it on there.
It came with the planning board, it was approved by Billy and the town, we moved it, we finally had to a lot of passing, but I went back forth, we came up, came back there. Three A. The result, it's about twenty seven years ago.
You might, I'll check with Billy. All right, so you'll, you'll make out your.
Register, what they have for an easement.
Yeah.
She'll send you.
You'll have it, you can send it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look for it.
You'll make out that waiver?
Yeah.
Request?
Yeah.
It's, it's like a one pager.
Well, that's good. The only other question I have is, how did this come about? You talk about this guy, how did this come about, how did this come about, how did, three months later, this come about?
I, Taylor, the first I heard about it was from Carol, and she said she wanted, it, it was actually, actually, it was put on the agenda, and I said, what's this? So, that's how I heard about it, I, I don't know how, who found the, was they, can we look at the town office? I don't know if Karina knows, but we certainly don't have that information, so.
Yeah, no, I.
Don't wanna say anything.
But, and I mean, I'm just curious, because it, it just seems I got a building permit, and then I poured concrete, and all of a sudden there was, this person said, that person said, you know, and I'm just curious, I believe I have the, I shouldn't be able to know, and I mean, like I told you, like I told Jade, and I told you, I have a building permit, I'm not stopping, so I just, and not to be, you know, big almighty, but it just makes me wonder when nobody can tell me who made the complaint of the, this problem, so I just didn't know.
Well, I mean, regardless of who made the complaint, it was an error in-house that happened, we, we issued a permit, we shouldn't have issued permit, so.
Was there an actual complaint made that the permit was issued?
It wasn't a complaint, there was an inquiry as to whether a permit had been issued. And at first, I said, I don't know. And then I went back to the records and said, oh, yeah, I, yeah, I actually signed that permit back in May, so like I said, I'm, I'm here to eat crow, it was a mistake that happened.
I'm not here to point the finger or shame anybody, yeah, but I, it, like I said, it really doesn't matter to me, but I just.
It does, it does.
It does.
And we're also.
I don't know, like I, so, I can just come in and.
Go out the waiver.
Go out the waiver, Carol will get you on the agenda, and we'll.
I'll try to get you on the agenda for the twenty-fourth, unless it's too busy, and then if it's not too busy, then it'll be the first one in October.
Well, I can tell you, I heard this guy's coming back twenty-fourth, so it's probably gonna be busy.
It's only, what, seven twenty-one? We could be one first, we don't, that's all right.
We can pray.
We can change it or not, yeah.
I'll be putting the agenda together with Paul, most likely, and some help with Carol, so we'll figure it out.
But it's all, it's all probably what, like.
Yeah, yeah, but the butter notices are gonna be the.
They need to go up this week.
Yeah, but they have others, it's, it's like, there's only five of the others, right?
We're still gonna get the papers, still gonna, it was a.
I don't think it needs a paper notification, I think it just needs a butter notification.
For, for a waiver.
For a waiver, yeah.
I'll check that out, yeah.
Well, I'm working in town, so I can stop and see Carol tomorrow and get that form.
Yeah, Carol's on your first week, but I'll get, stop in, I'll get it for you.
Okay.
We'll get it on, like I said, we'll try for the twenty-fourth, if not, it'll be the first October.
Works for me, all right, Taylor.
Phil, say, uh.
Taylor, what's that, get junior ready next year, yeah, three days a week, and then you gotta go to school the other two.
All right. Next on the agenda is the murals. Oh, we have a memo from Kristen Does, about the murals. Did everyone read that? I don't get a responding yes, assuming that. We need to discuss what, what we're gonna do about murals. Um, Jason gave us some preliminary thoughts about murals and where they might be. Um, I tell you, when I, after I read this, I was almost a little more confused than when I started, because it seemed like the movement's like the simplest thing, whether, you know, you just don't realize what you're gonna make right. But I know there are people out there, businesses, that want groups, that want to do murals, so I have no obligation to see, put something together, um, or use our current site ordinance to. Or use our current sign ordinance to. My best I, I request. I think. If we could put it in our sign ordinance, personally, I think that would be the best. That happens, we go, go through. Jason talked about finding a mural as. What was the word?
Of the definition?
Yeah, it was some sort. Didn't have, I didn't find it, and it was. He hasn't hit what the Institute of Justice said. As a small sign code, it defines signs as follows, it provides display of stars that's visible from a public place. As words, letters, figures, designs, symbols, logos, illumination, or projected images. Its definition does not include architectural elements incorporated as a structure or facade of a building. But the purpose of the sign code, signs do not, those only visible from the inside of a building. Or athletic field stadium, nor do signs include those called, held or attached to a person. We just changed our. Sign definition to that. Then could. Use our sign ordinance to. Predict. Murals. We can add Jason back, sure, I talked to him about it, and what we're thinking about doing, but I thought. That was one way he was talking about what we did. Because the mural. Can't. One of my comments was just allow, period. So we put a kid in all this trouble. But he said that, that would not work. And he says, if you, you know, if you try to. Restrict them, then you're gonna get trouble that way.
But if we don't restrict them at all, it waves all of our liability. So we could just not have any regulations.
Yeah, thanks, I saw. You'll be, you'll be the one that. Is sitting there and telling them, you want to allow this?
But we didn't allow. Right, like if we just.
They, they will ask, they will have, yes. The assignment, sign permit for a mural. And it won't be hard to get that sign permit. But. It won't, if you had votes, anything. I mean, I don't think not having any restrictions on it is the right way to go, because it could be huge. And it could be any.
You gotta remember one thing, the total amount of time you're gonna put to using a property. That one, that could, that could track the owners advertising the property. You keep that in memory, remember that often, right?
But that's why, if we include it in this, if we include murals as part of the sign ordinance. It follows the specifications that we currently have for signs.
I could live with that, instead of having a mural over the whole town, make it look like a wooden beat. You don't know what could be to that town.
Yeah, I mean, we can't regulate what it never does. We can't regulate the contents of these things. We can't regulate. What they put on them unless they are obscene or was one of those things.
Fighting words.
Fighting word, same as fighting word.
Was, was there an option about keeping the culture of the town? Something of that nature, some language I remember us kicking around before, that the science had to at least. Do something with the culture. It couldn't be counterculture or something like that. I remember us talking about it a few times quite a while back, but. Um, that was one way to kinda keep things at some level of order.
I was talking about our side. Don't discuss much, and we're doing the downtown committee, remember? Everybody knew what we documented, but the stick paid for it together. That was in there also. What you didn't mention.
So keep it within the side ordinance, you can regulate it at least by size and quantity. And time too. Uh, no, I don't know. I don't know that we can use time, but we could do size. And we can do quantity based on our current regulations. We can't do content. But, you know, I mean, and and we can't stop it, apparently, or not have it, so that you don't have any of these problems. Or, as Margarita says, no regulations and.
Well, not.
Well, they can't put them up without regulations, but I mean.
You could both not regulate it, just let, let the culture take care of itself.
But that's gonna come back and bite us. Somebody's gonna say. Uh, not so much, we have some, some for, the only two things that we're gonna regulate it are, is size and quantity, pretty much. I mean, the rest of it, or the, whether it's fighting words or, or.
Content, you know.
Oh, yeah. I mean, for me, that's our, that's our only. That's the only way that we can do anything, that's what I would.
If, if, let's say we decide we don't wanna regulate it. We're still gonna have to define a mural. And what it is that we're not regulating, because. Right? I could go, I could go. Put up a mural that I consider a mural, that you all might think is a sign.
Right.
Right? Eden McDonald's. My mural says Eden McDonald's, but it's not a sign. So, so first of all, we're gonna have to define it so you know which one is a sign and what's a mural. Um, so I, I, I think not regulating it will be probably more difficult. Um, I think it's gonna need to go into the sign ordinance, but I don't think that we necessarily have to say a mural is a sign. And a sign is a mural and it's the same thing. I think there's a way we differentiate between those because, not that we have to. We could say it's the same thing, you know, you could put up. X number of square feet of signs or X number of signs, and if you want one of them to be a mural, mural, that. But if we, if we treat it the same as a sign, then something like, um, behind. The mill here where they're talking about doing one. It wouldn't be allowed because they already have this sign capacity on that property. So they couldn't add, if a mural is a sign, they can't add another sign that's, you know, twenty feet wide and six feet tall. Uh, or they could, but they'd have to take down six other signs, which business is not gonna do that. So I think you have to decide if we wanna. Make the definition of mural different than a sign, then it could be added to a property without being counted as a sign. Or we could just say no. That's just a mural. Is gonna be treated the same as a sign, and if you have six in your property and it's the limit, you can't have a mural, period.
Or it. You know, it's a little bit.
Well, you're right, or, you know, you can put it, I mean, the, the size of whatever size allowed there because it's, it's sign.
I feel like if we separate them, then we run into this love it issue, is how I feel about the. You know, if you try to define a mural and define a sign, but if you keep it that, this is all that's allowed on the property. You know, and if they wanna have only one, and it has advertisements and things with it, then that's their choice, but. Is it, I'm curious, is this something that you would consider sending to the town on, on boat?
It's an ordinance and a sign, it would have to.
We have to. Well, if we're gonna change.
They're gonna change the sign ordinance, it would have to go.
If we're gonna change definition. I, does that have to go?
Yeah, any change, any change in the new vote has to go before town meeting.
So, and and reading this a little closer again. That was the Institute of Justice or justices definition. Yeah, it also says that Institute of Justice and Urban Design Associates has two. Uh definitions. And it gives you a definition for the mural. You want to do just a mural. But. He makes, he highlights the significant change in the one for the urban design. Which said, this will move any public place, including public areas and public waters. So that's what he changed on our, ours to make, make it more valuable.
And I believe.
I don't think we wanna put a, a definition of a mural.
I agree.
I mean, I think we just wanna include it and the sign ordinance and.
And he recommended removing the interior, like even at the post office or instead of.
Right.
The school gym or like, I don't believe that you should be including. Interior murals or signs.
Tell him, give him, give him.
I don't think you should be including, cause he recommends removing, I think ours currently to in yours or outdoors.
Well, cause you can have a sign side window. Right, that's viewable from a street. Yeah, like, so, or if you painted all of the front windows here in a mural form. Then that would be interior, even though it projects X. Also, can we remember that the Levitts case, it wasn't about what was written, it was about how it was. How it was like put forth, like it had nothing to do with how they wrote their town.
Right.
Regulations, it was how they enforced them, so that was, that was unconstitutional, so.
And again.
I think that.
Go ahead.
I don't have the sign orders in front of me, but I thought there was something that said, by definition, the sign is visible from a public way. Because for that exact reason, you just said, um, you know, we have an ordinance against flashing lights. So if you have a sign up there, you know, in this window that says open and it's flashing like this. Um, that's against our ordinance, even though it's inside. But if you have a sign in the wall. That says whatever it says, we don't regulate that, you can't see it from outside. And that's why, like, even at, at the water park. We probably have a hundred signs that are. Signs by the definition, because the inside the park, it says men's room or pizza or whatever, it's, you can't see it from the road. So those aren't regulated.
And it says in this, this Institute of Justice does say that. Um, signs do not include those only visible from inside the building, so. It, it. Right.
Yeah, I, I think it says that somewhere in ours.
Ours?
I think, I think it was recommended we fix ours.
We are. Ours, it says something about, uh. He said the biggest change was in, in highlights. But prior to that, it said, any force of object device, structure, fixture, display or other visual image that is. Visible from any public place, including public ways and public wars. I'm still thinking that it is part of. Sign or the street murals as a sign. And that where they're, it can be regulated. And, yeah, based on content anyway, but it can be regulated by size, quantity. And it can't have, you know, it can't have any flashing lights on it. Things like that, I mean, it all, someone could do that, they're like mural, there's flashing lights all over, unless it's regulated by. Current sign.
Would you have, this is just a question, would you have like special provisions for murals versus other types of signage? So like OJ said, if. If the mill came in, their signage is, they can't do anything on the mill because they, they already have all their signage taken care of. The hoods can't do a mural because they already have their maximum amount.
But they could take their loohoots signed down. And say, okay, we're gonna use that square footage and create a loohoots mural. So they can still use some of those. You know what I mean? Just use the square foot, footage that they currently have, if they were at the max. You know, it takes a lot to meet the max.
Yeah, I think you're gonna find that treating it. Identical to signage is going to not allow them anywhere.
I don't.
Unless they're this big.
No, 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 I, I say that pretty.
Because I think most businesses in town have. The maximum amount of signage that they can have, that's. Most of the times, they wanna promote their business, so they have the maximum of signage that they can have. So you're gonna find that there's gonna be very limited spots in town in which a mural could happen. And in most cases, murals aren't two by four, they're, you know, twenty by, uh, ten or thirty, whatever it may be. I just think that you're gonna find that putting it into the sign ordinance with the same regulations of every other sign. Is essentially limiting or not.
I think that's good though, for me. I, I look at it and say, okay, so you've got, you're already at the max. And the maximum is pretty generous. When you look at businesses. If you're a business and you're at the maximum, you say, you know, I'd really like to put a mural on, I'd really like to put a mural on. Okay, well, then you gotta consider what you wanna do with the current signage, square footage that you have. Right? Because if we don't, and we increase the amount of signage that someone have, then you have.
Or like, I'm not saying like increase, I mean, like, maybe it's allowed, like, maybe, like, dimensional requirements are just waived by, like, they have to go to the CBA. To get approval, or there's special exceptions for murals or something along those lines. I'm not saying that, like, they're just. Automatically you can have X by Y, but.
But, but you can't re. The whole process about that is you can't regulate it by content or what, what it actually depicts.
Sure, but you can regulate it by dimensional requirement, so if they wanted to have it be in excess of. So many feet.
Well, I think they can, that they could still.
They could still file a, a variance.
They could still do that with this current sign ordinance. They could go.
They start trying to vary it, so we then run into that same problem about love it town. Right? Because now there's a special exception to this business. Where we wouldn't do it to this business.
Well, what, what they would be doing is they would be coming in for a special exception or.
For a sign, not for a.
Size, not the size.
But we would have to.
Or the quantity.
In that instance, we're gonna have to make a condition of a mural that's different from a sign, right? Let's say they come in and they say, we're gonna build a mural. It's twenty feet wide by ten feet tall, and it just sort of, you know, looks like, oh, it's beautiful, can do it, give them the permit. Now they paint it and it becomes an advertisement, can't control the content.
No, no, but. By taking it, by saying that they, if they're already at the maximum sign capacity. And they wanna have more, they come into the CBA, say, we want. We would like to apply for a variance to increase our square footage of our sign. And. They can then put a m- mural.
Right.
Cause.
But then they can also put up a sign.
Yeah, and put an.
Well, they could do that now. They could do that now. They could come into the CBA and say, we. Wanna increase that.
From the building, so that they can put a mural up, they could get a, a variance for a mural that has butterflies on it. And for years from now, if you're categorizing it as a sign, I'll be here at the diner or whatever.
A lot of this is really fear here, like, a lot of these businesses are probably gonna do beautiful works of art, and I know that's subjective.
Yeah, you're far right.
But they think like, just, like this notion of just restricting and banning. Be able to have these like, encourage artistic endeavors in town and not squish them because we're so afraid. That people are gonna do bad things, like we should trust our citizens, that they're gonna make good choices.
I wanna talk to you in about thirty years. I mean, I think you're gonna have to change the heart.
Yeah, I would just say, I think this whole thing was stemmed by the chamber, you know, or not the chamber.
Well, we're trying to get.
Coming in, coming in and saying, we wanna do a mural, and I think if you're defining it as a sign, exactly as a sign. You're not gonna find any place in town that they're gonna be able to put it on a building, because of. Yeah, but the hoods didn't need a permit for that, right?
Yes, they did. They came in for the time permit, but the mural, it was.
Well, what about the, what about the spray painting in the back? They came in for a permit for that? Yeah, but that advertised.
No.
No, that would done, not with, but you can't call it. I mean, Jason was talking, a, a blank wall, which is some.
Like I said, I just think you're gonna, if you cre- if you treat it exactly the same as a sign. And they have, I think you're just like, they're gonna have a hard time finding any place in town where they can put a mural. It's just like.
But then if you. So what is?
Could you, could you put it to the townspeople to ask if they like us to consider an amendment?
Do whatever you.
I don't know.
Who writes warrant articles? Can anyone just write a warrant article?
Yes, just like that. As long as you do it. As long as it's done in the legal.
So we could just say, if somebody wanted to write a warrant article with the petition filled out, you show up, and I mean, that's almost a. Not really here from now, but it's, somebody could take action in the town.
But I think it would be better.
Well, I also think.
To, to talk to Jason, say.
Yeah.
Could you please write us a warrant article that asks the town if they want to have, allow. Murals of town, is that? I mean, I don't know how you do that, that's not.
We're just gonna ask people if they want, uh, to allow murals. That's gonna be a non-binding referendum, that's not a, that's not a ordinance change. So that doesn't go on the ballot, that can be a, a non-binding referendum, right, that. Basically, the selectmen can put on, um. The, the, the warrant. If you want to get a real input that, that's gonna make a change in March, it would be. Someone, it could be this board, it could be someone from the outside. Present an ordinance change that includes whatever it is that we wanna do with murals. They have to include the definition and then what we wanna do.
I think if you put it on ballot and. A specific context. You're gonna get those people who either like it or don't, I think you're gonna find that. It, it may fail, it's got a fifty fifty chance, but I think the chance of failure, people don't like. There's probably less, there's probably less people that are gonna like murals than there are the, that, that don't, that don't want more signs in town, because they love signs. If we, if we do a non-binding referendum, then we can try and tailor it. Ourselves.
Yeah, but then you wouldn't be able to take any. What I would do is maybe include it during your public hearing process for all your zoning amendments and maybe try to put it out as. You know, I mean, this year, I, I know in-house, we're already kinda keeping a list of things that we would like to plan where to consider. As far as zoning amendment changes, and you are required to hold public hearings in regards to all those changes that you're voting for. So maybe it's a advertisement prior to the public hearing, saying, these are some of the things we're contemplating and we're hoping to get some feedback. I know it might be a shot in the dark, but it might be able to give you some preemptive kind of.
You know what, we're actually, we'll something, it's called a master plan update, and it could be good.
Yeah, I don't know if that's gonna be done in time, but.
Well, no, no, we're, we're having a public outreach. Maybe in one of the public outreach sessions, we could discuss signage.
You could have that as a question.
And have that, you know. Considering, uh, making changes to allow murals, what's the general consensus, and that might. That would work, you could do that as part of.
Yeah, I just think, yeah, I think, I'm not pushing you guys to make a decision, obviously, I, I'm kind of indifferent on the whole thing, but I do think that. Um, if you're looking for some change, change should be made come March. Your timeframe is.
Yeah. Well, I don't think, I.
I think it's.
I really would hate to rush it.
Yeah, I feel sad, it's a big impact to the town, one way or the other, so I don't think. If it takes longer, I, I don't.
Been a while without it, but it's still, it. I mean, I just think about what we're going through now, starting with what's the signs we're doing, you know, and how we're, boards trying to. Talk to different business owners and different sign owners that may, you know, not be. Accurate or may not be legal or in compliance, so I mean.
I guess my question is, if Kim or whoever the entity is, decides to come in tomorrow and they wanna do exactly what the hoods did. Fill out a sign permit and put a mural somewhere, will we deny it at this point? I don't think we can, I don't think we can either, because we've obviously already approved it in other instances. And we don't have a definition for mural, and we don't know if we're treating it as signage or not signage.
I don't know, we've never had a sign permit for a mural.
I mean.
I know what they. I know, yeah, I know.
I mean, I'm just throwing that out there as, you know, a, a, a question, determine that it's a mural and not a sign.
I, I don't know, they wanna put something on the wall of the building that the public can see.
And, and you can't refuse the content, new best content.
So if they came in and it fell within the regulations today, we couldn't deny it. Which is fine.
I mean.
But, right, so is there really a point then, if you're gonna treat it like signs, is there a point in changing it?
That was my, that probably started. This thing came all the way back around.
Point to that was that. They're both the same thing, you're not gonna see it.
You're not gonna see it, no.
Could we just add a definition of a mural and then say, and we waive all rights of creative content? The town, right, so we're approving that somebody can paint something in this size on this building. But we are acknowledging that we have no decision on what goes on there or what is portrayed.
Well, we don't have that already.
Right, but we're just making it extra clear. Purple butterfly, blah, 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 we're like, oh, well, in the notes, we clearly have.
But would you have it follow the sign regulations as far as dimensional requirements? I think, I think the dimensional requirements is, is the, the sticking point, I guess for me a little bit, is just, I just think that, um. The likelihood of it happening and people might be all for it, then, you know, that it, they don't want it to happen, so let's keep it within the sign ordinance. They're only allowed to have what they're allowed to have, but I think, like I said, if someone came in tomorrow and filled out a sign permit, I think we would have to approve it. Right, but if it met everything else.
It meets our definition of a sign.
Right.
And if they're gonna paint butterflies on it, they don't paint butterflies on it, right?
And they can, and they can come in again, they can take down what they have and redo their sign, they can come to the zoning board and. Get permission for more square footage, so it really does work to put it within the sign. Jason did have per view consideration only. Um. For mural as any visual display applied directly to or otherwise may integral with a wall or ceiling surface. That was on, was the modern arrow G L. And the blast.
Oh, yeah.
But I don't think we want to define a mural, because we're.
Right, so in other words, if you paint it directly onto the siding of a building, it becomes a mural. But if you, again, if you wrote Eden McDonald's on the side of a building and painted it, that's a mural, that, that's.
I'm gonna rest, where I started, I think we use the sign ordinance, and if someone wants to do that. Kim Peckering is owning.
Yeah, yeah.
She could command say, I wanna put a mural on, where are you gonna put it, how big is it gonna be? Don't ask what it's gonna, what it's gonna say or what it's gonna depict, you just say how big, where, where you, where you gonna put it? And I'll put it over here, there's plenty of room there, that's fine, or no, you really, there's really no room, so you have two choices, you can either. Take down some of your signage and put up your, a new, new design, or you can go to ZVA and get. Uh, a, a variance for all more science based, to me, that seems pretty simple.
We have a lot of left, but it's in town, there, there totally nothing come, come in there compliant.
You talk, Jason, huh?
I try not to.
Just wonder if he could run that by me and see what he thinks about it, before we go through the process of. Or I, yeah, if you want me to come, I.
No, I mean, I don't mind saying, if we do nothing.
If we do nothing.
And we treat it like every other sign.
Right, and it's gonna be content. And we're all gonna regulate it by size and location, then. And then you have the ability to come in and see the ZVA, it, it kinda alleviates all of the. And then it truly is, has no. Respectable except for size.
Yes, it does, I mean, we just heard that pretty much a business would have to take down their current signage for them to have space to do something.
Well.
Right, like it's a percentage of the building.
Yeah, you missed the other part of that. They can come into the ZVA and get relieved by asking for a, a, a variance or a special exception, is that simple?
But isn't that exactly what happened in the Levitts case?
No, I think, I think the difference with the Levitts case is that. Because they did donuts and croissants.
They were trying to regulate.
They were trying to regulate it as a sign where they were regulating murals differently.
Right.
So they had a regulation for murals and they had a regulation for signage and they used. The signage regulation because it had donuts and croissants, so whatever it did versus. It being under the mural regulations.
I think so, if, if we did that. I'm not a member of the zoning board, but I've been very hesitant to approve a waiver for an oversized mural. That I know that the next owner could just paint over and use as a sign. So now you get this, you know, ten foot by twenty foot billboard. That used to be butterflies and now would advertise as a business, but since it's.
I do agree that that is a little bit of the snafu there, that like variances run with the land, they run with the building, so if it's a mural one day. And it becomes signage the next, and they're interchangeable, that definitely could happen.
But I mean.
You could put that in there.
Other than that, you're gonna try and regulate something. That you aren't supposed to, and you're gonna get in trouble with it anyway. Either in legal trouble, or you're gonna, someone might put a sign up, so it's ready to go.
You could put a clause in the whole thing, saying that when you use that wall, say, if the one, from real to something else. They'll come back in for a whole new variant, uh, type of exception.
I don't know if we can do that, then, then we have to define what is a mural and what is what. Just right back to where we started, if we wanted to allow murals, we need to come up with a definition that differentiates between those two. So that when we approve a mural, it can't turn into a sign.
As you remember, about twenty-five years ago, the Montlavaloune was, there's a whole backside T area. Designed and mural face the T area in town, and planning board shot it down.
All they did was, they did it.
It, it, you could do a hybrid approach of what OJ is saying, kind of what you're saying is, you come up with a definition of a mural. You have it have the same exact regulations, dimensional regulations as signs. And then when they go to the ZVA, they're either asking for a variance from the mural regulations or the sign regulations.
Maybe you got something, maybe, if, if we came up with a mural definition. And we said that.
And you just.
Murals cannot, murals cannot be changed into signs.
Yeah, or murals, you know, or the mural dimensional requirements are identical to the sign dimensional requirements.
But you need something that says that.
It's a mural.
Can be changed into a sign, that way there.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we would need Jason's.
What's a mural?
Cause it's content neutral.
Yeah, well, it becomes a sign when it.
The mural, yeah. I think condos, I mean, and a twice.
Yeah, I mean. I, I don't disagree, that it is a tricky scenario.
I, maybe we can look at that, what, what was called the, the. Freedom.
Oh.
Yeah. Institute of Freedom or whatever.
Institute of Justice, thank you.
Why you have an institute of justice, then you have the. Then you have the, um. Something else, Urban Design Associates.
I mean, in my opinion, if it doesn't have the business, and, and again, I may be wrong, I don't know legally if this, if they doesn't have like business name. Or the business, you know.
You can't regulate that, you can't say that, because then it's content. That's what, that, that's what you brought up, this whole thing is just a, that's why this, I, I think I'm agreeing a little bit with OJ, if we can. Put something in there that says what, check with Jason, see if we can put something in there that says.
That defines a mural.
That defines a mural, but says it can't be changed into a sign, because that's the big concern. We wanna know if we define a mural, can we say that it can't be turned into a sign? Or is that mean that you have to look at it and see that it's a mural? Is that content, because Jason was saying that wall with a little picture on it, that's content, remember he told us that. You can have a blank wall, have a little picture on it, that's content, that picture is content, so how, how would, if you can't get around it. Drop, we're, we're, we're trying to help people get murals and. Well, I mean, someone has to take you to court to challenge it, but apparently someone did wrong with this stuff.
Yeah, you're a popular man, so you can say.
Where are you, so we, we, will you, will you check with Jason on that for any?
I will, I will. It, it, yeah, I mean, so I'm gonna ask him. As far as signage go, if we do nothing and don't change our regulations, does he have any concerns?
And tell him about OJ's concern about, it, it, that means that people could put, you know, they could go and get a, a variance or, or. Special exception for a bigger. For, to a lot more square footage, but then if they sold and painted over the mural, it could then become a sign.
Right, yeah, I have that too, and then whether we should not define the mural and if it could be changed into a sign.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah, if we can make something like that, then it would. That would relieve the, your concern, right? Alright.
You could, could you approve a mural, like say the first mural, and the building is. And then having the approval that, you know, changes could be made to it, and then they. Came back, you know, for a change of use, I.
Maybe, the jokes are. If you have it, if it's gonna change, yeah, if it comes back in.
Well, I was, Green was gonna ask. If they change the whole concept, does that, should it create a different.
Why should it be usage? Or was a sign going to a mural, or a mural going to a sign, that it changed use?
I get a question though.
Not if it's all defined.
Not unless we have a mural.
But I think Jason's gonna look at, I bet he looks at just, in order to tell whether it's a mural. Gonna have, it, it's gonna be based on content, as he says, and even when you put it on a wall, it's just a picture on a wall. Long that.
Down here, that, this guy's door, you know, in front of that building, you know.
I mean, if, if someone wants to take it to court, they're gonna take it to court, yeah, I mean, and. Not that you wanna go, but you learn what you can't do, I guess, have to go, right? I mean, in this case, it, it seems to me like you're damned if you do and damned if you don't.
Oh, I don't disagree, I don't disagree.
If somebody changes a mural right now, what would happen? Nothing, right, because there's nothing defined in a mural.
We would tell them, I don't know.
Right, there's no like.
Well, no, 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 depends on the size that they made, if it. The size and location would be the reason to take it down. You, you could say, that piece right there, not say it's a sign or a mural, that piece right there, it's too big. Can't be their coordinate sign, you don't have to say anything about the content, you just have to say, you're, you're not allowed to have that, but that means square feet of sign. Or you're not allowed to have a flash, or you're not, you know, things like.
But let me say, we're just like, but it's a mural.
There's a town ordinance, in a sign on, if, enter to attract. Or advertise, not advertise, this, this is attractive, becomes a sign or it becomes a sign automatically. If we fall under kind of order, right now, the bylaw.
Alright, so. I'll try to get something else. We talked about it, Green, then check the base for. Alright, I'll move on, um, September is the return, turning lane study, that counts, we didn't talk about this at the board meeting, but. I don't know where it came from, where you guys can do something with this, because the planning board doesn't have anything to do with it.
I think the, the next step is to, if we're gonna do a turning lane study, um, beyond the traffic counts. Um, yeah, we're gonna just have to put that on the budget for next year.
But I think you wanted to wait and see what North Country Council was gonna do.
Cause they might have some money.
You're working on it.
Yeah, we discussed that at our Monday meeting, so. We were gonna, are you gonna?
Um, yeah, I I like said.
See, see what the issues are.
See what the issues are and and if there's all kinds of, whether it be the library or a drop box or. I guess, while I'm here. Who would likely pick up their packets on the weekend at the key? Because I just know that on most days, we still have a handful of packets still sitting in our desk come Wednesday. I know not yours. I'm not looking at you. I just, you know, because sometimes these packets can be. Big and for us to bring a banker's box over to the PD and sit it in dispatch. And then have to turn around back on Monday morning and come and pick it up because only one person picked up their package.
I don't think you do that.
What?
Yeah, leave it over there.
I think you leave it over there. And if and if this group doesn't pick up their packets over there, guess what? You don't get them. I mean, they're available here. Why me? They're available, they're available at the PD. You want to pick them up, pick them up at the PD. It's no different than picking up a town phone.
We can't have a productive meeting if if.
If three out of the five board members don't have their packets. I don't disagree.
Then let's, if we're gonna do that, we're gonna say if they don't come with their material, their excuse.
Uh, Joe, I also said the library too.
The process is that P the P the dispatch is open twenty-four seven.
Yeah, but they're not open as like a receptionist. They're.
But they're open to the general public. So what's the difference? I mean, like I said.
We've 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 taken up first step.
Electronically and have everything. Like my solitude, I was just gonna say, we could also just use modern day technology and use our computers.
All right, um. Maria, do you know that?
They have submitted a design plan review that will be on the first agenda in October.
Right.
In addition to a new site plan review.
We already can kill them. As a refrigerator issue, master plan update is the meeting is scheduled for, the first meeting is September twenty-fourth, right? No.
I believe so.
Yes.
Kickoff meeting if they wanted to.
Right. And next is, we're supposed to reschedule a meeting with you, Karina, because you're not available for your anniversary or your something.
Yeah, yeah, no offense, but I don't wanna spend my wedding anniversary.
Can you just give us a date sometime so we can try and do that?
Yeah, I mean, I think you all should still meet on October first and maybe at least start going over. I mean, again, I'm.
We talk, we are gonna be on October first to go through the site plan checklist and submission checklist, so we are gonna do that.
Okay, yeah, I can give you some dates. Um, I most likely will not be available. Um. You guys meet, what, the eighth and the twenty-second? I won't be available on the fifteenth, because my daughter's getting surgery and I'll be out that week. Um, but potentially. The twenty-ninth, but I will confirm. Yeah, because I I I I assume you don't want me to come at a regularly scheduled meeting?
I would, that'd be better, I would think.
I feel like our agenda is really full.
I would say most weeks it is, absolutely. Um.
The twenty-ninth, are you available?
I could probably be available on the twenty-ninth, yes.
Why are we tentatively scheduling for the twenty-ninth?
That that means we're gonna have four planning board meetings in October.
We're gonna have the eighth.
We just said, site plan and submitting checklist on the first.
Oh, true.
Do you wanna do November fifth then? It's the first in November?
That's fine, we can do that. So eleven five. All right, that's this training. Uh Carol, so everybody that's training stuff, Carol, Jade, I don't remember which one it was. Did everyone get that?
Yes.
Other than that, that's all there is on the agenda. Does anyone have anything else?
Can I add one thing?
Yep.
By the time, one year ago, I asked if you had a sign on your property, like Ford Ridge. Or off K B team in the highway or public roads. Do we have a power to enforce that? Were they, or they didn't have their own order within their development, that you have all signs on property, you know, each may without. We never did get an answer to that.
What was the question again?
Like your Ford Ridge.
Yeah.
One of this is signs. But for the town order, they may not be legal, but they can only be seen if this Ford Ridge. Of the properties up by the street, not up main road, that's considered a sign of the town order. It's a private property, you don't keep anybody else.
I don't know.
I don't know either. What's the definition of a public way? Because a sign, if you can't see a sign.
Private way. Ford Ridge.
It's a private road.
Private way also. Look at the definition though. And you have a ten page report, private road, private way, both. But if you have a sign like by the football club and that's a sports club and. At Ford Ridge, they put a sign outside, are we able, are we in, we in control of it or they control themselves? Or the homeowner, some of the homeowners up there asking it themselves, probably asking it, never had.
Okay, I don't know the answer to that, but if if you're correct that a public way, way, a public, I mean, private road is a private way. Then we can't control that, because it can only exist from the public way in our ordinance.
Yeah, I don't I don't know the answer, but yeah.
Because.
I don't know what.
The thing is, up to the. Up to. The up to the Moon Mountain, they want the town to enforce the parking on and on their roads. But it was a private way, the town police found it couldn't enforce it. Do you remember that? We had complaints like up on uh some of the roads that are on town property. There were people passing the speed, they want the town to enforce it, get in the dirt lane. Because it was not typically a town right of way. It put up four years ago.
Well, I I think we dealt with that up in the landing where there was parking going on, you know, well. There was people parking all over the roads up in the landing. And we dig designated that section as an emergency way or emergency access, whatever it was called. Put up signs for it, now we can enforce it.
Yep.
But the other part, we can touch that. There's no signs of any kind that can't park here. And there's, the block never, oh, the block so much that the whole block can go through.
Yeah, Joe, we don't enforce parking regulations on private roadways.
That's a, but with that, it's a live of times, we're trying to make a. Connection to it.
Yeah.
Stitch area of why or not?
I I I don't know the answer to that. That's what we said, we don't, we don't know.
I don't care one way or the other. I don't live up to any of those place. Thank you. I live away from. And we'll be late away. But he is, people ask for this, we're just trying to obey what they ask.
Yeah, I I don't know the answer. I can ask Jason while I'm asking about signage if you'd like.
Would you just refer those people to the ordinance? If you just refer the people to the ordinance that we currently have. Well, they're gonna do.
Oh, well, I was just wondering if you could do a brief non-public in regards to per personnel in like five minutes. Um, so I can update the board on.
We just advertised it.
I don't think you need to. No, I think you have the right to go into non-public at any time. Yeah.
Okay, why don't we go into non-public under.
Personnel issue.
Personnel issues or section?
Yeah, just personally, I think it's, I think technically it's. I can't remember the numerical or.
Yes.
Okay, yes. Can um also this be in non-public?
Yes.
Yeah, they can.
Yeah, they can.
I think you can also pick us out too.
I think they should say.
Is there anyone on alcohol? We have to fill it on the internet.
There's nobody on the internet, but I will stop recording.
Yes.